Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Tonight is the September 22nd, 2022, special town board meeting with the planning board. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you call our role, town board's role?
Councilman Beepin?
Present.
Councilman Marinero?
Present.
Councilman Franco?
Present.
Supervisor De La Sandro?
Present.
Chairman of the planning board?
And the planning board will now do its role, starting with Don.
Craig Arco, present.
John Aikman, present.
Ed Meleschi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Thank you.
So tonight, like I mentioned, we have a special town board meeting and planning board joint meeting with the planning board to consider a special permit from the town board and site plan and subdivision approval for 500 South Drive, Can-Am Hudson Valley Logistics. So this is the former dome site. Everybody at home remembers the dome, I'm sure. And well, finally, somebody has purchased that property, and this is the project which is trying to get approvals to be built there. So tonight, we are having the joint public hearing for the town board, like I said, to consider a special permit and planning board's site plan and subdivision. So let me turn it over to the applicants. How are you tonight?
I'm fine. Thank you. Good evening, Supervisor De La Sandro, Chairman Aikman, members of the board. My name is Richard O'Rourke. I'm a senior counsel to the law firm of Keenan Bean, P.C. We have our principal office in White Plains, offices in Fishkill and New York City. Here tonight, as the supervisor has explained, is a special event in the sense that it's a joint meeting. There's a lot of work that has gone into the development and repurposing of this site. It is 41.36 acres. As everyone knows, it's quite visible and has been visible for some time. And with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to our principal engineer, Richard Burrows, from Langin, who will take us through the site. And obviously, the elevation is up in terms of the building that's being proposed, and he'll certainly be explaining that to you, as well as the other components of this application. So with that, I'll turn it over to Richard.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Richard Burrow with Langin Engineering and Environmental Services. We are the applicant's engineer on this project. We are also the applicant's engineer, or the leaded applicant's engineer on Project Redtail, the Amazon project in the back part of the site. So first of all, let me just locate where we are. As the supervisor mentioned, it's the former Sports Dome site. So it's a great site, in our opinion, for this use because of this location with immediate proximity to 84. Come off 84, turn up north on Langhill Road, and make a left into Outpark Drive, which provides us direct access to Project Redtail and then the Hudson Valley Logistics Center site. So in our opinion, makes it ideally suited for this use. As the supervisor mentioned, this is the former Sports Dome site. So it's 41.6 acres. And Patriot Way is the road between us and John Jay High School, Route 52 to the north, and Project Redtail, the Amazon project, to the south. Big exhibit. It's taken a minute to catch up. So this is the site as it looks today, although the roundabout project on 52 and Patriot Way is partially constructed. This is our proposed project, and we did present this to the planning board, but for the town board members, this is new information. So it's 540,000 square foot building, 53 feet high. It has truck courts to the north and the south, car parking to the east and the west. Before I get into too many details on the project, I think I'd like to hand over to the architect to, first of all, talk about the building.
Hi. I'm Larry Valenza with M&amp;H Architects. I'm a principal with the firm. We're in St. Louis, Missouri. We do these buildings nationally, and we've done about over 100 million square feet of distribution buildings across America. The majority of our work is up in the northeast, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania area. So we're very used to working up here. I'm going to start with the elevations. So these give you a good overview of the scale of the building. These drawings, we also presented to the architectural review committee a couple of weeks ago, and they were very well received. They had no negative comments, or they didn't request any revisions. So as you can see, it's a very large building. And so what we try to do is we try to minimize the scale of that building by using paint colors, breaking up in a blocking pattern, putting vertical elements, these darker vertical elements that kind of march down the facade of the building to give it a rhythm. A lot of the older warehouses used to do a darker colored base and a lighter color upper walls, and it turned into a layer cake, and it just emphasized the scale of the building. So we try to break it into smaller pieces. So we put, it's built of concrete panels with reveals, recessed strips that go in the formwork to cause, to create reveals. They give you some shadow lines and some detail to the blank face of the panel. And then we apply very neutral colored paint. The neutral colors help the building kind of blend in to this environment rather than brighter colors, which tend to make it stand out. So we want it to be muted as much as possible and blend in. Really, the part that you really want to stand out and be different is the office entrance. So the corners of the buildings, we have an office at the south, east corner, and the northwest corner of the building. It could be a two-tenant building. We think in the market, the way it is today, it's probably a single-tenant building. In the future, who knows what will happen with the industrial market. So the option is there to put another tenant in by having an office corner at the other end of the building. So we embellish that corner with glass, and we try to set the panels in and out from each other horizontally so that it creates shadow lines. We put canopies over the windows and over the doors to create shadow lines and protect people going in and out from the elements. So we're really trying to call attention to that office corner. When you enter the site, anyone in a car knows exactly where to go to enter the building. And the truck drivers know, that's not where I want to go. They want to go to the docks. So the only other thing is, the planning board has seen this already and had a comment that they wanted to embellish the northeast corner because it could be visible from the school. So we've done that, and here's a rendering of the northeast corner. And so we took the detailing at the office corner, and we made it, we used the same configuration of detailing at that northeast corner, but we made it subordinate. So it doesn't have glass. We don't want anybody to think that's where you go in the building. We want everybody, when you pull in, to know that this is the entrance. But it's got the same kind of flavor as the other corner of the building. And it turns the corner the same way. It's got the same general proportions. And it's just subordinate enough that you know that that's not an entrance, but it's more of a decorated corner. So you can see that that corner is much less glorified than the office corner. So that's the corner you'll see when you pull into the car parking lot and enter the site. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Why didn't you make it look the same just without the windows? I mean, with the, you know, with the overhang over the top?
Well, the overhang?
The reveals, the reveals on the facade.
Oh, this element? Well, we copied that element to kind of look at them together. So it is flat, because we wanted the detail to be at the entrance. So we kind of tried to pick up the same detailing, but make this corner much more subordinate than this corner. Yeah.
I mean, if you didn't have any windows here, people wouldn't drive up, I mean, they wouldn't think.
Yeah. I mean, we could push and pull on it if...
I mean, it's just, it's a facade, right?
Right. Well, it is, it is a, it is a corner of the building that will be warehouse, and so they rack warehouses. So the more you push and pull on those corners, when there's not offices inside, it makes it, it's a big building. There's plenty of room in there for racking. But when they want to rack the outside wall, the more, the more ins and outs there are, the harder it is for them to make the racking work. But that's a minor issue.
So you figured you'd use the full height?
Yeah, yeah. The full height and the width for aisle widths. They don't want the racking to stagger back and forth in plan. It's not the end of the world. I mean, if we need to push and pull on that a little bit, yeah.
It's a lot better than what it was. Yes, a lot better.
It's the north-north corner, so it's got a corner there of the intersection.
Top right, top right of that.
It's that corner.
You're asking which corner represents which?
Yeah, number one. So the front that you showed us, that faces 52, is that correct?
Perhaps, maybe, if the public wishes to ask their question, could they come to the podium for the architecture part of the presentation? So then the public at home could hear what the questions are. You could step up right to the podium, please?
Sure. And if you could just...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Harvey Sealy. We live right across the street from there. The area that you showed, or the front of the building that you showed us just previously in the slides, that area, that face faces 52. I mean, if you look...
Patriot Way.
Patriot Way.
52 and Ice Hill.
Two and Ice Hill.
The new, the new Patriot Way, which was the old Auditorium Drive.
Okay.
That's where the roundabout's going.
But if it does, it's on 52.
Well, yeah, but it's a long way on 52.
Sir, you know where the traffic circle's going? Right?
The one that's being built now?
Yeah, of course it is.
That's that corner of the picture. I don't know if you can bring that picture up on the top right there, or turn it around and show them. That corner of that building is what's going to be closest to the traffic circle.
The school's over there.
Okay.
That's the 52 face.
This is the 52 face?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Fine. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me talk a little bit more about the site. I'll describe it in general, then I'll describe the changes that we've made since we appeared at the planning board. So it's a 540,000 square foot building, as we discussed, on a 41-acre site. It has 328 car parking spaces, roughly distributed, 100 on the west side and 200 on the east side. The site circulation, you know, a key issue, as I mentioned, is the approach to the site from 84. So all trucks will come up Patriot Way, make a left into the site. They can go directly into the southern truck court, or they can go up the site driveway to the north, and then along the northern truck court. The site is set back quite a distance from 52, where there's existing trees. We've been working with the professionals on keeping the taller existing trees. There's some of them that are over 30 feet tall. I'll go into that tree in Birmingham detail in a minute. The existing traffic signal that was never let up on 52 will be removed. That is proposed to change to a right-in, right-out intersection, which would be for cars only. The cars can come in off of 52. They can come in via the traffic circle of Auditorium Drive or Patriot Way and go to either of the car parking lots. And then we also have a site drive along the southern boundary, which at one point was called South Drive North, but I think now it's going to be a private driveway, and that allows for circulation between 52 and both parking lots without going past the school drop-off. So the site circulation has some redundancy. It's efficient. It keeps cars and trucks separate. The cars don't drive through the truck courts. The trucks don't drive through the car parking lots. It's an important aspect of safety. With respect to the screening of the, and the visual impacts of the project, and the building's 53 feet tall, the, there's been some discussion with the professionals about the visual aspects from 52, from Patriot Way, and from the high school drop-off. So along 52, there's trees that you can see today, where we originally had proposed to build a berm and eliminate all those trees and plant new trees. We've worked with the professionals to modify that approach slightly, where we're going to keep 22 of the tallest trees in the front, closest to the road, and we're going to still build a berm that's going to come up to the same height, and we're still going to landscape on top of the berm. So it's going to achieve more because you're going to have the benefit of the older mature trees, but then you have the berm that's going to protect the view of the truck court. We do anticipate you will see the top of the building at certain instances as you drive along 52, and then obviously, as the landscaping grows and fills in, ultimately, they become completely obscured. From Patriot Way and the drop-off, again, we're proposing a significant amount of landscaping. There is a grade change between Patriot Way and the site. It slopes up. We're in discussions with the professionals on enhancing the screening on the eastern side of the building. So I think, you know, similar to our approach on Project Redtail, we'll manage to reach a satisfactory conclusion on that. And with respect to, you know, the stormwater, there's two stormwater basins, actually, three stormwater basins on the site already. Two of those are legacy from this Sports Dome project. One is related to Project Redtail, and we're adding four more, five more basins, so that the project's in compliance with the current regulations, and we've got water quantity, quality under control. With respect to lighting, we have site lighting to illuminate the truck court and the car parking lot to typical standards for safety at night, and also for safety for the pedestrians walking through the entrance to the building, and safety so the trucks can see each other. With respect to that, lighting and its visibility, the fixtures we're proposing are dark sky compliant. They're LED fixtures, but we received some feedback from the professionals that we should incorporate house-side shields. House-side shields are basically a screen that goes on the side of the light, and it's less visible from the distance. So the lights will be less visible with the introduction of these house-side shields. Another aspect that we got some feedback on was pedestrian connectivity. If I go back to the overall plan, which is on the back of one of these ones, oops. This'll do. So there's a bus stop associated with Project Redtail, and it's actually really close to the front door of our project, which is, the main front door is the southeast corner. So we've proposed a sidewalk from that bus stop down to our site. It'll be on the, it's actually shown on the east side of Patriot Way on our rendering, but we've been working with the town as a preference to have it on the west side and avoid the mid-block crossing at our entrance. So the sidewalk will be on the west side the whole way down. There also is a desire to facilitate pedestrian connectivity to 52, so we've added a sidewalk that goes from 52, sorry, goes from the site entrance north on 52 and connects to the sidewalk network that's part of the roundabout project. So those are enhancements that we've made to the plan since it was last in front of the planning board that I think, you know, show the applicant's willingness to continue to work towards a successful project. A couple of other things, we're showing a water tank on the property. That's a fire water tank. You know, safety is an important aspect to these buildings. I know one of the board members is a sprinkler expert, so if you have real questions, ask him. But, you know, there's an ESFR sprinkler system, which is a deluge of water to put out a fire. So this tank will hold about 250,000 gallons of water. It's similar to the Project Redtail tank, but the two projects are independent from a fire suppression standpoint. And we are working with the town on extending the water main to this project. The water from Project Redtail comes from the east, and then we're going to extend that further to this project. That really, you know, kind of covers, I think, most of the aspects of the project. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have relating to it.
I think in our last meeting, the town engineer asked if you could do some visual simulations from the outside westbound lane of 52 to show what you'd see as you looked through the, through the plantings and at the building.
So we did some sections that respond to that. Actually, this might work. So, Mike, this is this one, so you see? So you're not going to see a whole lot, so that's, so the section might be more meaningful than just showing you a visual simulation, which would be a whole bunch of trees. So this reflects the changes to the berm that we got from feedback, where these lighter, lightest green trees that are close to 52, they're existing trees that are going to be maintained. Like I said, there's 22 of those. So these trees will all be kept. In the plan that we showed you last time, that wasn't the case. And then behind that, we have the berm, and then we have a mixture of evergreen and deciduous trees along essentially the top of the berm. So it's not just like one straight military row of evergreen trees. You can see the meander, and there's a mixture of species. So this shows, you know, this little gray box illustrates a car and shows, you know, the view. You know, I think the existing trees are a nice visual break, but they're not going to obscure your view. They're just going to help soften it. But then as you get, as you look into the site and see the berm with the new plantings, we anticipate that very early on, the trees are going to screen, they're going to screen the trailers really immediately, and, you know, relatively quickly, as the trees grow, they'll screen much of the project. So you're not really going to see much at all. You will see the corner of the building that the architect showed, it had the red car in the corner, in the good-looking corner, but that, that's, you're not really going to see much.
But you do have some plantings on that eastern side of the building, so it will break up the facade somewhat?
Yes. So, yeah, absolutely. We have sections of that way as well, Mike, right?
We do, yeah.
So let me get this section as well, so you can see it. I think it's in the back.
I'll pull it here.
So this is quite some colorful, but yes, so there's... So there's, I think we changed the parking lot as well. So the parking lot is now broken up with these islands that have trees in them. I'll start again. Forgot my microphone. So we changed the parking lot to break it up by adding shade trees in that, just to help the heat island effect and make the view, you know, a little broken up. And then on the slope up from Patriot Way, you can see we have, again, a mix of shade trees and evergreen trees behind the sidewalk. So basically, you've got Patriot Way, then you've got the new sidewalk, and then you've got the slope that we're landscaping. And so we drew two sections, E and F. So this is E on the top and F on the bottom. And you can see the right-of-way, I mean, this shows everything. So the high school is on the page left, Patriot Way right-of-way here, sidewalk, landscaping, access drive, parking lot, and building. So again, yeah, we're breaking up the view of the building with the screening that's being proposed. And, you know, we're working with the professionals on that as well. And then, actually, I'm going to show you Section D, because that's the one on the corner, because you will... Hold on one second. Yes, the section ZD is really from the roundabout towards the building, going across the detention pond. DD here. Yeah, so you can see that we come from the right-of-way line, cross this lower area, you know, which is the water, and then there's a succession of trees before you get to the truck court and the building. So really, in every, in every case, you know, we've done our best to use the space available to create some greenery, to break up the view of, you know, what is a decent-sized building.
Thank you.
So I think you covered this at the, at the last meeting, but coming, the cars coming out back onto Patriot Way, I'm assuming there's going to be some sort of stop sign or traffic signals or something there?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So the cars are about, really, two driveways onto Patriot Way. They're quite close to each other, but they meet the required spacing. So there's a stop, those are both stop-controlled intersections, the same as the driveways from the Amazon building.
Okay. Because everybody keeps talking about the traffic light down there that's never been fired, but I've been here long enough to remember when that used to be active.
Oh, my goodness.
That did used to work.
Do you want me to sign in? We, on Marge Sealy, I also obviously live with my husband across the street. The traffic light's been off for a long time.
At Roethel?
On Roethel, right, by the bank. We have a difficult time quite frequently during various times of the day getting in and out of our road. Obviously, the high school kids, a little bit of construction going on now with the roundabout. And if this comes in, and I can't see the pictures from back there, but it looks like it's bigger than Amazon, and there's going to be that many more people coming in and out. We really could use something to get us out of our road. The traffic light would be, would be ideal to come back on. I mean, the view and stuff, the dome is down, thank goodness. I mean, that's, that's been a mess for years. We don't mind a new warehouse coming. It's going to be done well, and it's going to have trees and all that stuff. Traffic's awful on 52. So we need something done that stops, or at least allows people in the neighborhood to get in and out onto 52. So I think that was it. And the letter we got said that trucks will be using 52.
No, that's not accurate.
What is your proposed cover?
Patriots Way.
Patriot Way.
Patriots Way from 84.
From 84. From 84 through the site.
Because it says, it says in the letter, the warehouse containing whatever square feet will access Route 52 and Patriot Way. So it says Route 52. So that's, that's basically the reason.
Employees. There's an automobile entrance on it.
Doesn't say that there. It just said that the access, and, you know, Amazon's going to come in, trucks and stuff in the back. But the problem would be if we have, when there's an accident or something on 84, we get tractor trailers all across 52, and it's a standstill. So we just don't want that kind of thing happening because there's a... So we just don't want that kind of thing happening because there's a warehouse that supposedly doesn't have a tenant yet, and we don't know what's going on with that, so... We would like a traffic light or some way to get in and out of our road by the back, that's all.
Okay, makes sense to me. Yeah, without knowing the tenant, it's really hard to predict any kind of, you know, traffic flows or how much impact it's going to have. I agree that fifty-two sometimes gets horrible.
Road is terrible.
If I may, you know, the introduction of the roundabout, which is the town's project, will, will help you get out of your driveway because it will introduce breaks in the traffic.
No.
The random access on the bus.
It's not going to help them at all.
Not at all.
No.
And it's the whole back neighborhood, it's not just...
It's not just us, it's the whole neighborhood back there, you know, comes in and out, used to coming out of the traffic light. We had fourteen thousand people across the street eighteen years ago when the traffic light was there, it gave us access in and out. You knew you were going to get out sooner or later. Now that's been down, and it's getting progressively worse and worse on fifty-two.
I mean, the traffic is, I've been here twenty-seven years, they've been living there since nineteen seventy-one. But yes, even tonight, the traffic is increasingly, we've become a bigger bedroom community. That's why I moved here, because I could afford to live here. And I don't see, my first question is, who's going to police this? Because even during construction of Amazon, truck drivers were lost right off the back trying to get the heavy equipment there, and they had all those gates shut on fifty-two, and people, no one was there to explain to them they had all the way around the line to the road. And even with this beautiful job, I've always been against lighting that goes beyond the properties of a building. Many years ago, me and Mr. Idema and the building department, we had discussion about back then was Marine Midland. They suddenly, one day, that's the corner bank, they put lights up on the roof pointing out. You literally could have played soccer during the day on the Route fifty-two soccer complex that was so lit up, and we got into a fight, and on investigation, we found out they did it without a permit, which saved my neighborhood, and they told them they had to light it in a down fashion. This past spring, they changed the lighting on the side of the building, and now my house is lit up and their house is lit up again, and who do you go to to complain? Who's the code enforcement? They could do a beautiful job on this building, two years from now, they get a new tenant, and they put up lighting on this that lights the place up even more. Who polices what we agreed to in this, in building this thing? Two years from now, three years, who's the code enforcement people here?
The town.
Well, until you do a written, in writing complaint with my name on it, so I did a complaint once many years ago, and I got attacked over it.
Whatever lighting is being proposed, which I don't know that detail, our planner will be reviewing that to make sure there's no spillover off that site. If another company comes in, they'd have to go for a site plan modification, which they'd have to come in front of this planning board again to make those modifications, too.
I appreciate that, but it just seems like sometimes there's no code enforcement, and I couldn't help, you can't help but notice this past two years, I don't see our police force anymore. I used to be, I could sit in my living room and look out to fifty-two. I bought the house, I've been looking out there for my whole life. In the past few years, I rarely see our police department on fifty-two. I used to actually see them at least once we pulled someone over.
I can't speak to what, where the police department patrols, but we had over a thousand calls last week alone, I'll tell you that.
I believe you. It's just I just, it's, I don't see them anymore. I just, it's, you just start noticing things less and less and less, and when we talk about this truck traffic, who's to control the truck traffic going to these, to these buildings?
Well, in their, in their approval, won't there be...
So what happens is, when it's operating, the vendors that deal with these logistics centers will be given the path in through Patriots Way. During construction, we did note there was some problems that we have brought to the attention of the developer now at this, that we're going to watch that more. And then there's also the GPS system that the information will be given, so hopefully the mapping services will pick it up.
Hope it works. So it's not, it's not a perfect system, obviously, but in their site plan approval, won't it dictate where the truck traffic is?
For these sites, now other trucks are, you know, we can't, it's a state highway, Route fifty-two is on jurisdiction of DOT, state taxpayers, so that unless DOT restricts truck traffic on it, we can, but in approving these two sites, and all the sites have to utilize Patriots Way. That's why Patriots Way has been developed and brought up to a heavy road standards.
So if we see a significant increase in their truck traffic for their day-to-day operations for this site, then I can tell the police chief to go ticket those vehicles?
Thank you. So, yeah, but as far as that light goes, we would appreciate if it was turned back on.
Well, our traffic consultants are with us, and we're going to definitely review Roethau drive-ins and outs and give proposals for them to mitigate.
But, but I think we should make clear that we're fully willing to go back to DOT to advocate for that, but in the end, it's New York State DOT's decision as to whether or not the developer has to put a traffic light there.
It's not our road.
But we will take that back to them.
Yeah, because I understand why they took it, they turned it off, because in, in the last year and a half that it was on, that controller box must have been hit six times. I mean, it was like a target painted on it, people ran it over. I mean, they had to run way off the road to hit it, but it's still there, they did replace it, and then they turned it off. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
If there's no further comment, I would respectfully request that the public hearing with respect to the special permit be closed. Continue the planning board meeting, public hearing.
Any other comments from the question? Any comments from the town board? Other comments from the planning board at this point?
No, I think I just wanted to, I thought the applicant's engineer did respond earlier to the question about lighting. Did I understand it's downlighting and it has side shields? So that will shield some of the lighting from the neighborhoods? Is that correct?
That is correct. So the lighting that's proposed is downlighting, it's an LED fixture, it's also a warmer temperature, you know, that white light is very piercing, and we're going to add house-side shields to help block the visibility from off-site. And there is no lighting from our project that illuminates the ground off-site.
Thank you. Any other questions from planning board members? We have none.
Town board?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to suggest that, just to review the process here, is that under our zoning ordinance, this is industrial zone. However, when a developer comes in of this size, the town board has to grant a special permit, an economic development special permit, that takes care of any modifications to the site, and then it is fully vetted by the planning board for site plan and subdivision approval. So this evening's purpose of the joint public hearing is for the town board to have the required public hearing on the special permit. The planning board will continue their public hearing to a regular planning board meeting, so there's still more opportunity for the public to, and to comment into the record with respect to the site. The town board is charged with two roles. After the public hearing, they have to take up consideration of a finding statement under CECOR, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, where all the issues, many of the issues that were brought up tonight and others have been fully vetted to satisfy, or the board will determine if they've been vetted to their satisfaction, and that takes in noise, traffic, lighting, the landscaping, water supply, stormwater, traffic patterns, all of those things are in it. There are still a few details of that that the town professional staff and the applicant's professionals are working through, so it's our recommendation the town board not take up that document tonight, and that we will hopefully bring closure to it in the next week or so. And then at that time, once that document is done, the town board and planning board are enabled to give whatever approvals or not that they choose to.
Thank you very much. Does the town board have any comments about the economic special permit? No, we passed this law several years ago to make sure applicants and companies would come in to meet our economic development requirements, which obviously they have. As far as the town board goes, as the attorney stipulated, we will be reviewing the final statement from them about secret review. We have a few comments tonight to still go through, so we will hold off on our negative declaration until then. Do, does the town board, do I have a motion to close our public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing closed. Chairman?
Okay, and may I have a motion to adjourn our public hearing regarding site plan and subdivision approval to our next meeting of October eleventh, 2022?
So, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation, and we will be advertising the town board when we will have a meeting. I'm working also with the Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency in tandem with this, for several other aspects with this project, so perhaps we might have to have another town board meeting for negative declaration to issue this special permit, which we will be advertising for. Any other comments with that? Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.